We'd like to have Curtis lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm trying.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance.
Tonight, there was a tax rate hearing where the board heard information about the proposed tax rate for this year. They'll be voting on that in a little bit. It's going to be $4.18. And so you can look at what the difference is. If your home was $100,000 this year, you're paying $795 and up to $3,977. Just keep those in mind because I've transferred those onto a grid here. You can see that depending on your home value, you're paying less money on taxes than you were in 2016-17. Now, your home's assessed valuation may gone up, right? So in 2016, your home may have been valued at $100,000, and now it's $300,000, but you're still paying $264 less than somebody was paying on that same valued home in 2016-17. So keep all that in mind as you start hearing information about Senate Bill Three. Senate Bill Three is a bill that will have to be voted on by April of 2026 by all the local voters, whether or not they want to freeze their taxes in Jefferson County or not. And it's not just impacting our schools. It's going to be your fire protection districts are based on assessed valuation or property tax, ambulance district, your sheriff department, your roads and bridges groups, and your libraries, Jefferson College. All those entities will be impacted by Senate Bill Three here in Jefferson County. So I wanted to make people aware of that. So as they start hearing more about that, they have a little more idea of what's going on. Secondly, I want to share with everybody that we're going to start having meetings about possibly having a bond issue with a zero tax increase to address some of our facility repairs and safety upgrades. We've done a lot of work with our Fund Four balances on asphalt and roofs and HVAC. You can see there, we've done about $9 million worth of work, but you can see there, we have about $130 million more that we need to do just in those three areas. That's not counting our windows and other things. We have 30 acres of roofs in our district. We have 337 HVAC units. And so we have a lot that we have to take care of in our district. It requires a lot of maintenance and replacement. So we'll be meeting with the public and talking about this. Some other things we may look at are some security needs. We have a finance committee, and we met and talked. Some of the parents on that thought that'd be important, possibly ballistic film on every first floor window in the district. We only did it in strategic areas right now. The other thing is monitored doors. We have over 300 doors, exterior doors in our district. Be kind of nice to have those monitored so that if anything's ever propped open or opened and then it's not supposed to, we would get an alert to know that we need to go check that. So those are some of the things we're going to be talking to our public about. We'll have town hall meetings at several locations around the district and find out what our public would support. What's the most important thing to them? Is it the parking lots? Is it the safety? Is it our HVAC? Is it our roofs or something else? So be looking for some notices. Those will be in October and November. We're probably, we're planning on like three or four meetings, so several different nights to give people an opportunity to provide us feedback. And then in December, we'll start talking with the board about possible ballot language. And then in January, the board would have to vote on ballot language to have it be on the April ballot. We can do about $48 million worth of work without increasing our debt service levy at this time. In addition, we've talked a little bit about doing some performance contracting as well to improve the efficiency of our lighting in our buildings. We can do about $8 million of work there with no, and pay for it out of our operating cost savings. So those are things we're going to talk to our public about and make sure they're aware. And then we're also, we have some leases that are in our Fund Four balances that we looked, we'll talk to people about paying off for Antonia Middle Schools on a lease purchase, as well as about 55 buses. And so we'll talk to our public about paying those off earlier, early with part of the bond. And that would free up about 20 cents of levy that we could move into operations to help supplement what we do on a daily basis. So looking forward to hearing from our public and seeing what they will and will not support. It's needed. We have about $150 million worth of work. We had an analysis of our facilities. We've got them broken down, the age of every HVAC unit, the age of every roof, how many are expiring warranties, how many are still under warranty, how many, what, all the costs of the remaining parking lots we have to do. So we'll be able to give people detailed information, and we hope we can have some productive discussions about what they would support on a ballot in April. So I know that was a lot, but want to make sure you guys were aware of that.
The, on the page where you say my perception, my taxes keep going up, so the schools are getting more. The, it's not that their, the tax rate is not going up, it's actually going down. But the value of their home is going-
Yes, that's what, yeah, that's what I said. If it was $100,000 now-
And so they probably are paying more. So their perception isn't necessarily wrong, it's just that the value of their house is, it's worth more than it used to be.
Right, which drives their tax rate. And the other factor out there that people are really starting to get monitoring is your house payment goes up a lot too because of insurance and the way Jefferson County's been hit lately.
Hammered here lately, right?
It's, they're expecting 30 to 50% increases in your home insurance coming up. So it's a lot of pressure on people financially, but we just want to have open and transparent conversations about some plans moving forward.
And this would be, once again, a zero tax increase bond issue?
Right, right.
Okay. House insurance, home insurance is fun.
Yes.
We'll move on to 5.1, Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield. Dr. Birch and Mr. Chris Snell from Gallagher. Gentlemen?
The district carries individual stop-loss insurance to protect its self-funded medical prescription plan. Our current Anthem policy covers claims above $275,000, and it renews on October 1st. Gallagher typically forecasts stop-loss costs in advance, but this year's Anthem renewal came in above budget due to new large claims. Stop-loss premiums usually account for about 6 to 12% of self-funding costs. So Gallagher had sought out proposals from eight carriers, including Anthem. Competing bids were equal or higher, and most included lasers that would increase Fox's liability on certain high-cost claimants. Through some negotiations, Anthem did reduce their offer by $50,000 and did not apply any lasers, reflecting a total premium of $1,184,924. Anthem also offers immediate reimbursement, unlike on carriers where we maybe have to pay the claim upfront and wait for reimbursement. It is recommended that Fox renew with Anthem at the $275,000 threshold affected October 1st, 2025.
And Chris, you've got some information on that?
Just to support the conversation as far as the driving impact, as was mentioned, normally we try to budget a, when we're setting the rate process back in April and work through the process with the board in May. Typically, those meetings, we typically come in with a forecasted increase to those stop-loss premiums. This did exceed that. And again, the function of that is really being driven by certain large claims that were of concern with not only the incumbent Anthem carrier market, but when we went to the marketplace, there were some concerns over the ongoing, not only the size of the claims, but the diagnoses and the ongoing health risk concerns that these carriers were concerned about the risk. So therefore, the market unfortunately did not yield as much help as we would hope for. So that's why we're still recommending that the Anthem solution is the best solution, again, because it protects the district's liability and does not do what some of the market alternatives did, which was to, let's say if there was a certain claimant with a certain diagnoses that was concerning, that instead of setting that threshold at the $275,000 level that we were speaking of, they might set it at $500,000. So the district would take on that additional $225,000 in claims. So the Anthem offer while above budget is still in our, from our perspective, clearly the best solution for the district.
So that situation, is that what is referred to as the lasers in the information that Dr. Birch presented?
That's correct. Lasers mean that the individual stop-loss carrier can evaluate the risk. Instead of applying that 275 threshold to everyone, they will say, I'm concerned about this one claimant, so we'll set that threshold on that one claimant at 400,000 or 500,000 based on the anticipated spend for that particular person.
And once again, Anthem removed those lasers, so it's just a $275,000 cap on the stop loss, right?
Correct. Yeah, the premiums, again, were higher than what was anticipated. Normally, we do better than the forecast. That's the idea, is to improve upon that, and we've done that historically. So this is just kind of a unique year where these late emerging larger diagnoses concerning claims came out, and that's what triggered Anthem to take that position.
You know, one of the things that we had a little discussion on was the number of stop-loss claims that we've had, and we were unsure, or I was at least unsure, of what historically that has been. Do you have any perspective, or can you talk to the board about that?
Yeah, so the last, the current plan year that you're in, which is not finished, you've had four claimants exceed that 275,000 threshold. All of last year, you had four claimants, and then prior three years before that, you had three each of those years. So the last two years, or almost two years, have seen an uptick of, which I guess is technically $25,000 or 25% bump up in the number of large claims exceeding that 275 threshold. We also looked at some rolling claim, rolling periods just more recently to say, you know, what else is going on. And we are seeing not only the number of claims at that threshold, but the size of the claims that hit that threshold are becoming larger. You know, again, that's not unusual in the marketplace. Health costs are going up, so larger claims are going to go up as well. But the size of the claims that went over that threshold has gone up more dramatically in the last 12 months than even the prior 12.
At any point, would we look at increasing that stop-loss number from 275 to maybe a little bit up or higher? What kind of impact, or how does that work in a self-funded situation like this?
Yeah, we look at that almost every year when we evaluate the plans because, you know, as you, if you keep that threshold the same, and again, I won't get into a math lesson, but if the percentage trends that you see in the marketplace of 10 to 15% are going up, and you're keeping that threshold the same, then there's more claims being taken on at that same threshold. So yeah, it's right to look at that. We did look at that, not only within Anthem, but also to the marketplace. So we solicited bids for both 275,000 as well as 300,000. And the math doesn't work out because some of the scenarios where the $300,000 option might be lower in premium, but they're taking out, you're taking on a significant more claims liability, right? That additional 275,000, or $25,000, excuse me. So from our analysis, it did not make sense for the additional risk to take If you bump it up to 1,500 from 1,000, you can save in premium, but you're taking on more claims exposure. So from our perspective, the math did not make sense to look at 300,000, but we'll continue to look at that each year because it does make sense to evaluate that.
I'm glad that we at least looked at that and weighed some options out. I've been doing a lot of talking and I don't even think we're at questions yet, but anybody else want to ask Chris some questions?
Chris, can you explain for some people that may not be as familiar, why the immediate reimbursement piece is important for a district?
That's a good question. So when you look at third-party stop-loss carriers, meaning carriers that are not integrated, that are not a part of the health insurer that you choose, so today you have Anthem, and Anthem provides the stop-loss protection in addition to the medical claims and network processing component. So when you have that stop-loss piece married with the medical administration, when Anthem hits, processes a claim that hits that 275,000 threshold, your liability stops at that point. You're never, the district is never having to fund a dollar above that 275,000 per person per plan year. Whereas if you work with a third party who's not, cannot be as integrated as Anthem is because it's not Anthem's product, oftentimes there is a lag, if you will, if you have that $400,000 claim, let's say you're paying $400,000, then you're waiting anywhere from, you know, it could be 10 days, 30 days, 60 days to get that $125,000 back to you. So the cash flow advantage does exist with those medical carriers, so they have an advantage. But again, it doesn't keep us from going to the third-party stop-loss market because they are getting better at trying to narrow that window of reimbursement or that lag, but that lag still exists. And again, we've, we have, there are large claims that exist out there. We've had other plans that had a $5 million claim with a third-party stop-loss carrier, and we worked with them to get a quick reimbursement, but there was that funding of $5 million before the dollars came back. So that's, that's why that's important.
How does the, I guess, change in the total cost of it impact an employee individually from that perspective? Does this cost get spread back into the premiums that are kind of covered on the individual basis to make up that delta or?
Yeah, we recommended a adjustment in the premiums as of October 1, and that adjustment did have room to absorb that miss, if you will, in the forecast. So the employee impact is zero in terms of that standpoint. Obviously, ongoing, we're going to continue to work with the stop-loss carriers and monitor those large claims because, as we talked about, the stop-loss may be 6% to 12% of the premium, so that's 88% is claims, right? So the claims is really what drive the rates year over year. So to answer your question, this budget gap, if you will, does not impact the employees whatsoever for October 1. Thank you.
All right, microphone on, that might help. Motion to approve the proposal from Anthem, Blue Cross and Blue Shield as presented.
So move, Shalou.
Second, Fraser.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Chris or Dr. Birch? Seeing no questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
5.2 Navigate Agreement, Dr. Fergo.
Yeah, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agreement with Navigate Building Solutions as presented. We'd like the board to approve this agreement with Navigate to provide support during our interaction with the community regarding the possible bond issue I just mentioned to improve our facilities. That will help with pricing of the prospective projects, project schedules, project management, as well as some of the publicity and some of the signage to provide people factual information about this. And as they're working through that, remember the arbitrage we were dealing with? They'll help us not having arbitrage in our project and all those things. So I recommend we approve this as presented for the $4,500 fee.
And if I remember correctly, our last bond issue, Navigate did help us out with that, but they came on after the bond had been passed.
And the arbitrage was already.
And we had started all the RFPs for the projects and things like that and know what kind of issues we had out of that.
We had to carry somewhere between 800 to $1 million throughout the project because we didn't know what arbitrage is going to be. With their help, we'll make sure we don't have that. And Cory's here with them if you have any questions for them.
Anybody have any questions for Cory? All right, we need a motion to approve the agreement with Navigate Building Solutions as presented.
Motion, Smith.
Second, Myers.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to piggyback onto your comment that it's nice that we have them involved from the ground floor, you know, in this process versus bringing them in haphazard layout for the fact to help clean up some of the pieces.
Well, if, you know, and if the public supports us in going forward on the tax, no tax increase, bond issue, being on the front side of this, it will save us money down the road.
Absolutely.
As we saw once they came aboard, how much they saved us when working through all the issues we had with the last bond issue, so.
Agreed.
Yep.
Remind our public that they did all our facility analysis for us. They have all that data for us, and they've shared it with us, but they're very familiar with what our district needs and they'll be a great help.
Yep. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? None, no opposition, motion passes. 5.3 Food Service Equipment, Mr. Schmidt.
The district recently issued an RFP for two pieces of kitchen equipment for Hodge Elementary School and Antonia Middle School. Interested companies could bid on any of the equipment and installation. We received bids from six different distributors. A summary of the equipment and bids was attached. When considering the lowest bid by line item, the total cost was $66,375, so we're recommending that the board approve the purchases as outlined below for a pass-through refrigerator and a dishwasher conveyor at Hodge.
Exciting stuff. All right, so we need a motion to approve the purchase of food service equipment as presented.
Motion, Shalou.
Second, Fraser.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Mr. Schmidt about the process or the bids?
And Ms. Moldenwall's here, if you have any questions for her as well.
Just always want to say you guys do a great job when you put this information together, and I know you put a lot of hard work into it to make sure that we're getting the best pricing that we possibly can, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
It's pretty cool.
It is exciting, see? Yeah, well, it's very exciting. Cole, it's cool. It's cool. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion passes. 5.4 Access Point Refresh, Mr. Prezavento.
Good evening. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve a quote from Provision Data Solutions for an access point refresh, not nearly as exciting as a refrigerator, but still exciting. This quote includes the purchase of 300 new wireless access points to replace aging devices around the district. The quote also includes installation and configuration supplied by the vendor. The total cost of the project is $137,778. This project has been approved for 50% E-rate funding, so the district's commitment is $68,889 to be paid with local funds. Just as a reminder, as I usually mention when we talk about E-rate projects, that by applying for E-rate funding, the project was subject to E-rate's competitive bidding process similar to our own to ensure we get the best pricing for our district.
All right, we need a motion to approve the quote for Provision Data Solutions as presented.
Motion, Smith.
Second, Littner.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Are these new wireless access points just giving us more ability, more headroom, more data rate?
The access points that we are replacing are at end of life, so we need to replace them with newer units that will continue to support for more upgrades.
So it'll just be a swap out of an existing wireless access point?
Correct, we're swapping out existing units.
All right, any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, very exciting.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
5.5 Charter Spectrum Agreement, Mr. Prezavento, another exciting bit.
Dr. Fergo, are you going to speak first?
I'll wait till their vote's done, and then after you guys are done voting, I have a couple of things I want to say.
Perfect. So the district recently entered into an agreement to lease 211610 Brook Drive, Suite 200, for a new alternative learning center. In order to equip this space with the instructional and safety resources needed, we are requesting that the board approve an agreement with Charter Spectrum for Internet service at this new location. The agreement is for one year of 1 gigabyte Internet service for a price of $1,068 per month. It is recommended to approve the agreement with Charter as presented.
All right, so we have a motion to, we need a motion to approve the agreement with Charter Communications Operating LLC for Internet services as presented.
Motion, Littner.
Second, Smith.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Can I have one question?
Yeah.
What about E-rate for this, JP?
Yeah, so based on the timeline of when this agreement was executed and when we were wanting to move in, which is beginning of January, we didn't have time to work through the entire E-rate process, so we'll be paying the full price of this for the first year, which is why I'm bringing the board a one-year agreement.
Right.
We're currently working through the E-rate process, so subsequent years will be at that E-rate reimbursement of 50%.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes.
All right, I'd like to add JP, in his narrative mention of the new alternative learning center on Tembrooke, we currently have a program in the basement of Central Office Bridges. We need to expand that program, provide more services to kids that are struggling in a regular school setting. And so we want to make sure we offer the best program available with more space, so that's why we are going to be leasing this space for, we have a five-year agreement with the landlord there. Remember, these are kids who struggle in the regular setting, and however, we get them support so they can still get their high school diploma and graduate. And ideally, alternative centers, alternative learning is better if it's off-campus anyway, and so, and we'll be able to provide more services for the kids in need. It's close enough that we can get them their food and things like that that they need during the school day, and it'll be a better program over there and we'll be able to serve more kids, so.
And once again, we're servicing both high schools with this.
Both high, oh, yeah, thank you. I forgot to say that. Both high schools in this one program.
Yeah, I think it's important to note as well that, you know, the analysis that your cabinet and team put together on that is by getting them back into the school setting, we're really able to fund this at no additional cost because the cost of.
The attendance.
Being back in the buildings is going to offset the losses we had before.
Yeah, for the, for the kids that are removed from the educational setting, yep. So just wanted to let our public know about that, so there's not any questions. And like JP said, probably around January, we'll be moving those kids in to those, that setting along with the staff.
All right.
For approving that.
Thank you. 6.1 Setting the 2025 Tax Rate, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, Missouri statutes require taxing agencies to set their annual property tax rate before October 1st. As provided by Missouri statutes, when assessed property values rise, tax rates will decline. And the opposite is true, when assessed property values decline, tax rates will rise or increase. The outcome of either scenario results in level of tax collections for the district. For 2025, assessed valuations increased $79,275,397, which includes $6,452,852 of new construction values. Tax collections from new construction values do not alter the tax rate. All tax rate collections are reviewed by the Office of the Missouri State Auditor to ensure accuracy. Proceeds from property tax collections will be used to support general operations, capital improvements, and payment of debt interest and principal. So we're recommending that the 2025 property tax rate be $4.186.7.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to set the 2025 property tax rates as follows. .3200 in the Capital Projects Fund, .4766 in the Incidental Fund, and .3901 in the Debt Service Fund. Do we have a motion?
Motion, Myers.
Second, Fraser.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Mr. Schmidt regarding the tax rate?
So it looks like after our lease purchase obligations, we're going to have about $3 million to do capital improvements in the district.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes. 6.2 Financial Reports, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, the financial packets for the seventh, second month of this fiscal year are attached. Included in the following reports are the August 2025 year-to-date financial statements, revenue and expense reports, and our month-end operational fund balance graph.
Are there any questions on the financial reports, monthly financial or the year-to-date?
I guess we're showing a little bit under revenue right now versus budget, correct? From what's in there?
Yes, we are showing a little bit under on there. We've been monitoring everything as we move forward, so we should be in good shape.
That's kind of due to some of those lags on payments coming in and such.
Yes.
On that one, we did have the parking lots that we completed that, that didn't, the bills didn't come until July. Also, the Sackman baseball softball field and the Fox High School lights, so those projects were allocated for last budget year, but were not completed until this fiscal year. So that's why those capital balances are lower.
Thank you.
All right, 6.3 Payment of Bills, Group A. Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, we're presenting the Group A bills for August 2025, and they're presented for your review and approval.
Motion to approve the Group A bills? Anyone?
So move, Shalou.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the Group A bills? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Any, any noes? Seeing none, the motion will pass. On to 7.1 Adoption of the Consent Agenda. We need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Motion, Fraser.
We have a motion.
Second, Littner.
Second, Littner. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Any opposition?
Abstaining from 7.3.
We're going to get to that one here in a second. So 7.1 passes, let's move to 7.2 Consent Agenda, 7.3 through 7.16. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, 7.3 through 7.16.
I'll make a motion for this one.
I'll make a second because I haven't done that tonight. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on those items? All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any noes? Any abstentions?
Abstaining from 7.3.
I abstain from 7.13.
So those two abstentions are duly noted, and with that, the motion passes.
And with your vote, you accepted a donation that Jimmy John's provided, Jimmy John's of Arnold provided, a 45 box lunches for our Beginning Teacher Assistant Program Meeting with an approximate value of $400, so let's give a hand to Jimmy John's helping our new teachers.
Freaky fast.
Freaky fast.
Freaky fast. 8.1, let's adjourn this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in.